The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
The October 11th, 2022 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together with the work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to remove their hats, to please remove their hats and turn off their electronic devices, or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of Marion County's school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the room.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Don Browning, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Throer, District 4. Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. John McGowan, Director of Mental Health and Wellness, please introduce the individuals who will be providing inspiration and leading us in the pledge on this evening.
Good evening, Board Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Mrs. Throer, Mrs. King, Mr. Browning, Attorney Powers, Mrs. Martinez Lopez, and Superintendent Gullett. Every year, our schools participate in the National Red Ribbon Week Campaign, which is designed to bring awareness and to the community and schools about living drug-free. Mrs. Katie Burlow and Mrs. Lisa Panzer are school social workers, are our district representatives, implementing the Red Ribbon Campaign this year. And we also continue to work closely with the Marion County Children's Alliance on this year's campaign. Last year, North Marion Middle School's Safe Promise Club was the champion for this event, and we are thrilled to have the club sponsor and teacher, Mrs. Evans, along with some, many of her students, here tonight to discuss the Red Ribbon Week Campaign for this school year. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Evans.
Hi. The Safe Promise Club stands for Students Against Violence Everywhere, and we align ourselves with making positive choices, not just at school, but in the community as well. This year, we will again be leading our school in Red Ribbon Week.
Hi, my name is Delaney Evans. Red Ribbon Week is the annual catalyst to show intolerance for drugs in our schools, workplaces, and communities. Each year, during the last week in October, more than eighty million young people and adults show their commitment to a healthy, drug-free life by wearing or displaying the red ribbon.
Ms. McGowan, can you pull the mic down a little bit, please? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jade Dorsey, and this year's theme is Celebrate Life, Be Drug Free. This year's theme is Celebrate Life, Be Drug Free. Hi, my name is Jade Dorsey. This year's, this year's theme is to celebrate life, be drug free. We plan to encourage our peers to make better choices and celebrate these choices through various activities and themed days throughout the week of October 24th through 28th.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Perry. Kickoff for the event is Friday, October 21st. This free event will kick off the celebration of being drug-free. It's at the Ocala Drive-In Center, starting at 5:30 PM. Movies will be shown, there will be vendor booths, and it's sure to be a good time.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn Plant. The participants of the Red Ribbon School Spirit Contest will be judged in person by school board staff and community council against substance abuse. Members on Friday, October 28th, and each school level has the opportunity to win a cash prize of $500.
Hi, my name is McLaren Roberts. We encourage all schools to join us as we make a commitment to ourselves, our families, and our communities to celebrate our life and be drug-free.
Thank you, and I will ask Ms. Evans and all her students to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join us in saying the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Shawna Hughes, Coordinator of Multicultural Education, please introduce the students who will be speaking on behalf of Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you to all those North Marion students and parents that came out for that inspiration.
Great job.
Greetings, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. I am here this evening in recognition and celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month. From September 15th to October 15th, we pause to honor the cultures and contributions of both Hispanic and Latino Americans. The observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week, under President Lyndon Johnson. In 1988, the observation was expanded by President Ronald Reagan to cover a thirty-day period. This year's theme, Unidos, Inclusivity for a Stronger Nation, encourages us to ensure that all voices are represented and welcome to help build stronger communities and a stronger nation. Diversity is one of our country's greatest strengths. Throughout the history of the United States, Hispanic community members have helped shape our country's social, political, and economic landscape. For tonight's recognition, I am proud to introduce Jade Alexandra Cologne, a sixth-grade student from Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks. She will read a personal piece entitled, "Where I'm From," inspired by a poem by George Ella Lyndon.
Where I'm from, I am from Puerto Rico, from the sazón, from the adobo and sofrito. I am from the clothes hanging out to dry in the backyard. I am from running to grab a ripe mango from the tree and placing the flamboyant flower in my hair. I am from the parrandas and fiestas patronales, from abuelita and tía. I'm from talking very loud and expressing with my hands, and from late-night conversations sitting on white plastic chairs. I'm from el ratoncito, who took your fallen teeth and left you some money, and grabbing grass for the Three Kings camels. I'm from the la borinquina, porcana, and las octibata. I'm from Puerto Rico, from our beautiful coastlines, from mountains and caves, from when tía baked flan and abuelita cooked arroz con gandules. I'm, I'm from when we would hear the sound of the coqui every morning, every evening, and after every aguacero. I am from Puerto Rico. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jade. Superintendent?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair members of the board. Great to see you this evening. And following our wonderful students, I am pleased to have an opportunity to introduce to you one of our newest members of our team, Wantaneisha Morant, who is now the Executive Director of Human Resources. Ms. Morant joined us just last week for the first day with us on October 3rd. She has more than ten years of human resources experience. Most recently, she worked at the Alachua County Library District as their HR Director and the Administrative Services Division Director. Prior to that, she was employed by the University of Florida as the HR Manager for the College of Journalism and Communications, and as a Student Employment Coordinator for the Enrollment Management Division. She holds a Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration with an emphasis in finance management, and following that, she earned a Master's in Business Administration. She is certified from the Society of Human Resource Management as a Senior Certified Professional and holds a Certificate in Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion from the University of South Florida. It is my pleasure to officially welcome Ms. Morant to our team.
Good afternoon. So, very happy to join the team. Chair Cummings, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Dr. Gullett? Very excited to join the Marion County Public Schools, I said team, but actually, the family has definitely been a warm welcome. Very excited to be here, very excited to lead the team on our quest to continue ensuring that every student succeeds. And I'm gonna take just a quick moment of personal privilege, since I am here, just to thank my village. We always say that it takes a village to raise a child, but it doesn't stop once we surpass adolescence. So my village is definitely here to support me. They've continued to support me, and I'm very excited to have them here. Again, very excited to be here, very excited to work hard for each of you, and I definitely thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Ms. - oh, uh-uh. We're glad to have you on board, Ms. Morant. Listen, bring the village up. There's about three villages out there for you, so bring all of them up, and Kevin, get a picture. We'll go down and take a picture with you as well. Come on, guys.
So the village includes family and friends. I see some are not standing, but I see family and friends.
You know, yeah, it's a - I twiddle my thumbs and entertain myself for a moment.
And for all those who are wondering why there is so much pink and green, that is the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated.
That's what I said. Your spare time, you must wear pink and green.
All right. Mr. Jerry Prince with the Band of Brothers, please come forward. Band of Brothers.
Madam Superintendent, school board members and staff, I'm Jerry Prince. I'm the treasurer of the Band of Brothers, Veterans Group out of the villages of Florida. Last two years, we've had a donor give us some money, and his stipulation was that it has to go to the three school districts that encompasses the villages, Marion County being one. And a good doctor told me that it's the best, so, okay. So anyway, I brought a check tonight, and I gave it to some lady, but I think she went shopping. I'm not sure. So anyway, the other, the other thing that I brought, that I gave the lovely doctor tonight, is a Band of Brothers challenge coin. And I'd like to read just, if you don't know what a challenge coin is. "The military has many traditions that have helped to build camaraderie among military personnel. However, carrying a challenge coin is one of the most well-respected ones." So it started out as a unit symbol, where the units had their coin, and everybody in the unit took it, and it's gone further and further over the years. Now, general officers, when they make general officer, they get one, and they get another one when they make the second star and all. The challenge coin has gone back many, many years. They don't know where it started, but they've traced it back at least to the Roman times, the Roman military times. And one of your lovely officers doing a check-in, when I checked in and set the coins down, she knew what it was. So it's gone also to the law enforcement. But the main reason to come tonight is to bring the check for you, for $4,000, to the school district, and use it as it's, you guys can best do. That's what we're here for. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. No, 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 come back, come back, come back. Come back, board, y'all got anything?
First of all, thank you for this. I love the concept of the challenge coin, and this one is a really, really good-looking one. So thank you for that. That's really great. And obviously, thank you for the donation. We appreciate all the gifts that potentially come from community, and we love it whenever donors stipulate specifically how they want their money used, and I'm certain that this district will put that to good use. So thank you, thank you very much for you and the donor choosing, choosing us to be recipients for that, that donation. We're very, very grateful.
As I told your superintendent prior to the meeting, she was gracious enough to come down to the villages last year and receive it, so I said, "We gotta go to them this time," and so that's why we're here.
Thank you. I would also like to say thank you for this coin. It's pretty fantastic, and thank you for your service, most importantly.
Yes. Wow, okay, I'm U.S. Navy, and you, sir?
United States Army, sir.
Oh, thank you, thank you, and I appreciate your service. This was, is, is gonna go in a very special place. I'm 1959, under General Eisenhower, and I take that as a great honor. And then I was able to serve under, under President Kennedy, and just briefly, under President, followed Kennedy, help me.
Johnson.
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 Say it again?
Johnson.
Johnson, yeah, thank you, and that, I have the memory of an eighty-year-old. Thank you, sir. And I appreciate, appreciate you taking the time to drive up here and to present this personally.
Yes, sir.
That, that means, that means a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Please give our regards to all those down in the villages that thought not robbery, for them to consider Marion County as one of the benefactors of this gift, and it will go to good use, and, and thank you for the challenge coin. I collect these, so I'll add it to my collection, so thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Superintendent?
Now I can run away?
Well, if I may, while Mr. Prince is here, and I want to thank him again, the Band of Brothers, and, and he knows this, but I wanted to share with, with the board, this last donation went in the hands of our families through parent literacy kits that were done for math and literacy. So those were done through our homeschool liaisons, it's distributed to our parents, and through literacy evenings, so thank you again.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Superintendent?
Thank you. I recommend approval of the agenda for October 11th, 2022, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of items D-18.1, D-18.2, D-18.3, D-18.4, D-18.5, and D-18.6, that have been placed under discussion, and items C-7.1, C-8.1, C-9.1, C-9.2, C-10.1, and C-11.1, that have been pulled and placed under discussion, and items C-14.1, that has been removed completely from the agenda.
Thanks, Superintendent. May I have a motion on this superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member King. Are you ready to vote? All in favors?
I'd like to make a, make comments, Chair.
There's not a discussion on this, sir.
I'm sorry?
There's not a discussion on this part. It's a straight vote. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Polls have the same sign.
Well, there must be discussion, sir.
No, sir, not on, not on this part.
Not on consent agenda.
Not on consent agenda. Unless you pull, this is the item that you pulled. Okay?
Okay.
Pass is three-one.
I'll put it into my comments.
Pass is three-one. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 26, 2022 school board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Vernon.
All right, thank you. Yes. This is, we've got three of these to address tonight, and they're all critically important. I think the record is, the, the record that we develop, we even speak to it, that we will leave a lasting legacy. Well, we've got to get our minutes right. The, this is, is missing comments from, really, all sorts of comments. Start with Chair Cummings. Important comments on the Donellen Scoreboard, fire response, Fordham naming, just important items, it must be in the minutes. Allison, Vice Chair Campbell, volunteers, a plea for it, a serious conversation on donations, early, early academy plea, just important materials. And I had Stanton Weersdale Elementary School Safety, we'll, we'll deal with that tonight, and those have to be, they have to be listed. The, I can go, go into it on the next one, but the, the listings are dropping off, and I noticed a, well, here's, here is, this is October 18th, just pick this by, by, for reference, but this is the standard we had, for example. Chair Throer informed the public that the Marion County School Board would be creating a Facebook page, that Attorney Powers informed the board on some early learning, Neola issues. Chair Throer, these, these go down an entire page, and it's very important when you go back and you're looking to follow exactly what the board did and where, where the individuals stood. Representative Cummings requesting a letter to be drafted to the Florida Attorney General. Ms. King recognizing issues at Stanton Weersdale and, and making comment. Dr. Gullett making comment. Chair Throer reminding board members of ethics training that was coming up on December 30, oh, let's see, it was required by December 31st. Important materials that just show the competency of the board. Now, these seem to be drifting away, and I will, I, I did receive this, and I think you all did, but it's, after further discussion, this came from Administrative Assistant, Ms. Julina Martinez Lopez. "After further discussion moving forward, there will be no board members' comments in all future work sessions and board meetings." Now that just can't be. That cannot be. I have to, I, I, I know, I know I sit on the board, and I was not consulted in any workshop or board meeting on this. This must not stand because it would, it, it wouldn't meet the test of management versus mismanagement. It wouldn't meet the test of malfeasance. It wouldn't meet the test of standard that's being brought forward, and I know we have audio, and we have video, but we don't vote on those. We vote on this document and these minutes, and unless, unless that meets some very hard discussion at a, at a workshop, I am absolutely not in favor of it, of scrubbing that. it, of scrubbing that. It just, it just, I, I just can't figure out where it comes from. So, I will, I cannot support this. I've got, we've got two more to, to do, and they're in the same state where either, either a, a board member's left off entirely, and the others are not, that type of thing. We, we just gotta go to a very solid, right here, this is our standard. This is the way we did it for many, many years, and that's just the way we have to do it, I believe, going forward. At least, that'll be, that'll be the, the-
Board Member Browning?
Position I, I'm gonna put forward.
Board Member Browning, you brought up in a prior meeting, this same issue about the minutes, and especially, especially about Board Member Comments, which is commentary. We did some research in, in looking at what minutes should be like in accordance to Florida statutes. Attorney Powers, can you go ahead and, and bring us up to speed on that?
Yes, sir. Upon advice of counsel, the advice that I would have for the board is that under Florida Statute 1001 dot 42, 1B, Minutes Contents, "The minutes shall show the vote of each member present on all matters on which the school district board takes action. It shall be a duty of each member to see to it that both the matter and his or her vote thereon are properly recorded in the minutes, unless otherwise shown by the minutes, thus shall be presumed that the vote of each member present supported any action taken by the district school board in either the exercise of, violation of, or neglect of the powers and duties imposed upon the district school board by law or rule." The Roberts Rules of Order indicates that as to rules for minutes, the title, the only things required, and in fact, what is recommended under Roberts Rules of Orders, which we are bound by, where there's an absence of any further bylaw, we must include the title of the group, which would be Marion County School Board, the date, time, and venue, the names of the attendees, the person recording, a copy of the agenda, which is included via board docs on each of these, and it, the advice given by Roberts Rules of Order is, do not record the debate or discussion, only the outcome. So, both statute and Roberts Rules of Order are in agreement, and I would advise moving away from a model which tries to record every aspect of every comment, because that becomes unwieldy, and it will necessarily be incorrect unless there is a direct word-for-word transcription taken. So, as to the minutes themselves, minutes are a much briefer and more clean item that records simply the outcome of the vote, as opposed to every item necessarily discussed, except for those items which are previously listed on the agenda. So, something that is in Board Member Comments or Concerns at the end of a meeting necessarily will not be part of the agenda, and therefore would not be recorded in the minutes as, as something that is an item for discussion, only if it's on the agenda, and only if there was a vote taken, which is a necessity of statute and Roberts Rules of Order.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell?
Thank you for bringing this up, and I know this is actually discussion that we normally would have during a work session. After hearing Attorney Powers' explanation, I understand it a bit more. Frankly, though, I, I am interested in why the shift now, I guess, that, that this is the first time that we've brought this up and are gonna make a shift now. There is, in, in my opinion, there has been value through the years of being able to actually see when something was originally addressed, and then how it became an agenda item, or how it transpired throughout a process, and oftentimes, that occurs through a board member's initial notification of it through board minutes. I understand that legally, we don't have to include board comments. Again, I think the practice has always been, for however many years we've done minutes for the Marion County School Board, at least in this format, has been to include some form of commentary from the board. I, I understand that there wouldn't be a reason that the board would actually take action on something that wasn't on the agenda. I don't think the board ever has a walk-on item that occurs during the comments section, where someone actually would physically make a motion during the board comments. That hasn't happened in the two years I've been sitting here. I don't know that it's ever happened. I don't know that it's illegal for it to happen, for an actual motion and vote to happen on something that might not have been on the agenda if it did appear in, in board comments in that time. Personally, I, I kind of agree with Mr. Browning on this. It doesn't need to be an entire narrative of every word that was spoken, but if something is being addressed during a board comment that then later is leading to a work session item, or later leading to an, a board agenda item, I think having a record, written record, of when that addition, when that initial item was brought forth to the board is valid, personally.
And I would recommend to the board that if that's the direction the board wishes to go, that, that, that should be limited to sort of the headline subject, as opposed to specific commentary, and number two, that we establish a bylaw that will supersede Roberts Rules of Order, and of course, we are entitled to include any comments that we wish under 1001 dot 42. That provides a floor, not a ceiling, provides a minimum standard. Roberts Rules suggests that it may become unwieldy to attempt to have all of those, but I certainly recognize what you're indicating, that we may, there may be time when an item has been brought up, and we wish to track the history of that item. So, the difficulty becomes, now it is the responsibility of an individual human to record, this is the subject of what it is, and, and who defines that will necessarily be the person taking the moments, and, or taking the minutes, and it's not necessarily the entire context, or who said, "What about this?" Or, "How many times each member spoke?" or anything like that. It should be limited more to a, a extremely brief sort of headline snapshot of what the comment was, or what the, what the comment was, if we, if we choose to extend beyond simply recording the motion and vote.
And-
And, and we can do that at a bylaw policy review at any time, and then we would need to go through rulemaking development in order to put it in our policy.
And from my understanding of this, because there was much discussion about this with the superintendent and others, when we get into lengthy commentary or lengthy board comments, it gets to the point where you're trying to ask the person that's taking the minutes to interpret all of the commentary. If there is a, just a heading, I'm good with that, but once you start trying to be, our, the person taking the board minutes is not a stenographer. That's not, that's not their job. They're supposed to take, according to the law, the minutes of those things that we have voted on, and the discussion in those things, but to, and, and we even talked about, if, if every board member wants to provide a written, Ms., Vice Chair Campbell, you provide a written copy of yours, but is every board member gonna do that? I could tell you right now, no. I could, I could say it right now. Um, no, but that's, that's the privilege that you've taken to make sure, ensure that your commentary is memorialized in the minutes. So, that's where we are with that. Go ahead, Attorney Powers.
And as an example, everything that we've just discussed right now, I would, if we were at some point where we did wish to include this conversation in the minutes, what would probably be a proper thing to include in the minutes would be the text of something like, "Discussion of Proper Contents of Minutes."
That'd be it.
And then it doesn't need to say that-
Word for word.
-Mr. Browning said this, and then Ms. Campbell agreed, and then Mr. Cummings said this. Right. And that would then, you know, that would then clue in that we had discussed the proper contents of the minutes, but nothing more. So, that would be, you know, in, that would probably be a reasonable compromise to put within our bylaws at the time we do that.
Sure. Thank Ms. King.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I know why this happened, is because we had a board member that was voting no on the minutes, and as the attorney just stated, it's Florida statute that we do not have to have those minutes in there. We're asking our secretary to interpret what the board member means, and when it's not interpreted correctly, a board member votes no, and another concern of mine right now is we only have one secretary, basically, that is in that position. In the past, we've always had two, and they could work on these assignments, because the board docs, the minutes, it's allotted time, and I don't think people understand how much time it truly takes. And so, you know, out of respecting that position, respecting that we, you know, haven't filled it, no one's really there, I would like to also see a board that's respectful of the secretary and her time. So, I'm fine if it's not statute that it's not in there for practical reasons, and that's where I stand.
Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you. The, the issue here, for me, is not a, a legal, like you say, a ceiling or a floor. It's, there's 20 years plus. It just goes on, as far back as I could go. There's some very competent minutes taken, and indications, like I'm indicating right here, and I'll just make this one was October 18th, but Attorney Powers informs the board. In other words, you can know that this, in fact, took place by going to that document, which is, which is the board, the minutes for that meeting, and it, it, it helps. No, it isn't a verbatim stenographer thing, because that isn't what it's about. Ms. Campbell, I have, when I came aboard, and you have new board members, you have people in the community, you have new employees, they'd like to know what's taking place. I've, I've had, these are so enlightening and so helpful. This is a Ms. Campbell situation, commenting on, it's, it's the subject material, but if you want to go deeper into it, once you see that Ms. Campbell had these thoughts and brought this forward, this was in reference to supervisory elections, office, and what you would like to see take place, and then you can go to the video, and you can go to the public record of audio. But what we're trying to do here is just be functional. That's really, it isn't a putting a burden on anyone. I think this was probably Ms. Martinez that did this one. I, I would think so, but it's very, this is very complete. I'll just submit this as, as an example to the superintendent. And then, the, the second issue is, when a question comes up, like my question, which was, a listing of board member comments with a scrubbing and a complete absence of Board Member Browning, for example. That was just an example. That has to be questioned, because it wasn't a lack of doing it, it was just an absence. It looked as though I, I hadn't spoken, and I had spoken at length on various subjects. So, what we got to do is build credibility, and, and that's, that's where I stand on everything that comes across my desk for District 2. That's just Reverend, Reverend Cummings, I, if I haven't gone to that 100 times, I haven't gone once, on things that you sum up at the end, especially once you became chair, that you sum up, and it's, it's a pretty easy way to tell what was, what was, became important, and then you can go on deeper into it if you feel like it. But for people that, perhaps they didn't see the meeting, didn't hear you speak, this is subject material. That's really what it amounts to.
Attorney Powers, could you also address the, the audio/video recording part of the minutes, and how that, how that is translated into all of this?
Yes.
As a supplement?
Yes, sir. Actually, three things then. One would be, it's never in order for a member to simply object to approval of the minutes. If a member has some objection to the content of the minutes, he must offer a correction. If disagreement arises about the correction, their correction can be amended using the rules for amendments, or it is ultimately rejected by the body. So, the discussion we're having right now has to have a, has to have an actual motion to, or has to have some content as to what the correction offered is, in order to do it properly. Secondly, as to the video, the video or audio recording is not required under Florida statute of our meetings. However, if we do have video or audio recordings, then they are public record, and as public record, they can be accessed at, at any time. So, you know, there, we have a, a YouTube channel on which those reside, and there is no, that those go directly from here to there. There is no, no editing, no cleanup, no scrubbing, no anything. Those are, whatever is recorded here, when the camera is on and recording, is being sent to the servers at YouTube in order to maintain that for public record. We don't take a copy, put in snippets, and then send it to YouTube. So, that, that would be, now, also, I will indicate that perhaps, I, in this instance, may have gone on too long, but in reviewing Roberts Rules of Order, another item is that without permission of the Assembly, no one can speak longer than permitted by the rules of the body, or in a non-legislative Assembly that has no rule of its own meeting to the length of the speeches, longer than 10 minutes. So, any individual member, or myself, if being addressed, have to limit my comments to 10 minutes or less, and in addition to that, that once I've spoken twice on any item, I cannot speak about it again. So, those are all factors, which if you, in the future, choose to edit your bylaws in order to allow for those items, you may, but currently, any means by which we are still doing those things is not in order with the way that we should be. Granted, what we are attempting to do is, in a small collegiate body, we're attempting, attempting, or collegial body, we're attempting just to make sure that we all have our opportunity to speak without undue pressure reliance on, on, you know, the, the exact detail of rules where it's not necessary, but-
Vice Chair Campbell?
The farther we get down that path, the more that we-
Right.
-get called into those items.
So, because I made the motion on the minutes, and we have the disadvantage of only having four of us here, so there isn't a fifth person to vote, Chair, I would like to recommend, and if this needs to be a motion, so be it, either withdrawing my motion, or tabling the board minutes from July 26, August 4, and August 9, until we're able to have a conversation more extensively and potential bylaws change. I know we have a, an administrative briefing and work session scheduled for Monday, where we will be talking about policies, and that would be an appropriate time to have further discussion, should that be something that the full board wants to discuss.
That, that may be, that you wish to discuss that at that point in order for future moving forward, but as to the minutes, tabling is generally inappropriate under Roberts Rules, and we can't just table it for a future date. We would need to offer a correction, and then vote on whether the correction is, because this is about whether those minutes are accurate for the purposes that are required by statute and Roberts Rules. If they are, then the body can decide to accept them or not correct them. They either correct them, or they are, or it doesn't pass, and the agendas, the, the minutes then don't pass, but we have to offer a correction that is amended until it does.
Right.
So-
As well as there is-
We have to take care of old business before new.
Properly made, made motion, and it was seconded, correct?
Uh, that is correct, yes.
And-
Well, I have my comments that were not in each one of those, but you guys probably don't, so.
So-
So, I mean, I could make the corrections right now to my sections, but-
And if you have-
I didn't understand. I didn't follow that part.
If, if we were to need to correct the minutes, these three sections of, at least the two board meetings, I have my writ, I could submit what my board comments were in each of those meetings right now, because I have those corrections, but I'm not certain that the other board members are able to do that at this juncture.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Well, I would just submit, this is not a courtroom. We're, we're in control of the floor and the ceiling on Roberts Rules, on any of them. They're a, it's a, it's an outline, and if it's abused, of course, that would be something to consider. However- However, we do have workshops, we do address these things. I would say, if we have a precedent, I'm just, this is Board Member Browning saying that if we have a precedent of 20-plus years, then that suddenly changed. And I'll go back to the idea of if a person is being excluded, and that was the reason I brought it up, everybody else was noted except for Board Member Browning. So, I said, it's either all or nothing. That stops the issue until we can figure out why that was taking place. Now, my suggestion, back in reference to what the attorney was just saying, is my suggestion is we go to the, to what we've always done in the past, which is have a subject listing of comments. And it's very helpful. I mean, if you don't want to do it, that's fine with me, I won't be on the board in a month. But, but if you don't, if you want, I would say that the community certainly likes to know that Board Member Powers, I mean, Attorney Powers stated that he would need consensus to draft this letter. You know, in other words, those are some very helpful things that took place in that meeting at that time. And that's for me why you have minutes. Campbell, Ms. Campbell made comments, very useful. Ms. King made comments, very useful. Dr. Gullett made comments, very useful. Chair Thoreau made comments, very useful. Mr. Browning made comments, very useful. So, I don't see any reason to deviate from a 20-year precedent unless there's some reason to deviate from a 20-year precedent. And please, board, I'm one of five, just have at it, you know, just go for it. If you want to eliminate comments, eliminate comments.
Exactly.
But I can't imagine why you'd do it.
You just said it, it's all or nothing.
You could do that.
We're fighting no, we're, they, we're not doing it. And then now that we're not doing it, you're not happy with that.
Oh, okay, good point, good point. My analogy, and I do speak in terms of analogy, I was, I was talking.
Hold on, Board Member Brown.
I have to answer.
No, you don't, no, you don't. Hold on, because I was finna say something before you came back.
Okay, okay, go ahead, then I'll answer.
By law, we're, we are in compliance by statute. Am I correct, Attorney Powers?
Yes. And in the past, whenever a point, if, if any past instance where minutes have been approved, if no point of order was raised or objection was made, those agendas are still valid and those, those, those minutes are still valid. We haven't had one in which, in my recent memory, in which there was a, a vote against approval of the minutes. Where there is a vote against approval of the minutes, or there's an objection, someone has to tell what they want for the correction. And then the board, at that time, agrees on a correction. Or if they cannot agree on the correction, then you have to analyze whether it is legally sufficient.
And according to that, and according to that, and where, where we are, this whole conversation really should, we should be voting on the minutes. If there's a correction, submit the correction. Or if there's an addition that needs to be going to this minute, then submit that addition so we can vote it up or down. But this lengthy discussion that we're having, a concern about whether we're going to include something or not, that happened, that's not, that's not what this is about. So, Ms. Campbell said
Does it prevent us from having individuals
Right.
Want to correct the minutes in the future
Right.
Or to alter our bylaws?
Right. And Ms. Campbell said that she had something that she could submit. If that's a correction that she wants to submit, just tell us what it is that you want to submit. As a correction, we can, we can submit it and we can vote and keep moving.
Well, again, the section to be corrected is the board comments section. So, if we continue to have an agenda item that says board comments, but yet doesn't list a single board member's comments, I'm not certain how that aligns. And so, that's my concern. I think that, at this point, we would be a 2-2 vote if we actually took this vote, because I, I do want a little additional clarification on it. I would like Ms. Thoreau to weigh in on this. And maybe, maybe it'll be a 3-2 vote at that point, one way or the other, and we'll move on. But I am frankly concerned about the precedent. I guess it was on me that I didn't reach back out to Ms. Martinez-Lopez when we did receive the email saying that we're going to remove board comments from all of our future items. And then suddenly, the board minutes that we're approving tonight don't have them. And so, that was a decision that was made separately and apart from this board. And that was a decision that was made that I didn't question at the time. But because Mr. Browning has brought it up now, I am questioning it.
So, what do we want to do about that?
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So, I'd like to answer that because it's a very important question, Ms. King. And that is, I, I feel when I am excluded from something, and this is just a personal, personal opinion, I feel as if I'm, if I'm excluded, I'm discriminated against. We have four individuals, we have five people in a board, we have five people approach a door and Board Member Browning is asked to go around back, like in the old day, in the old segregated days. I'm supposed to go around back, come in through a different door. I just can't abide that. So, I say, nobody goes in that door unless all five of us go through. Well, it doesn't mean we shouldn't continue to use the building. So, we then have a discussion about it. And they say, well, we're sorry, or, or we feel the same way, you got to go around back, we're all going through the front door, you go around back. And then I would just address that. But the question is, these things need to be, what Ms. Campbell just said, they need to communicate, that's what we're doing here, is we're analyzing, doing the best we can about issues that come up on the agenda. It is an agenda item, so it just needs to be right. And it's not hard, it's not a hard thing. Those, this one I submit, and
Again.
Superintendent, here you have it. It's just a great item, so.
Again, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so let's vote on that. If there, if there are, then you vote it up, you vote it down, if it's, whatever. But let's follow the procedure.
Well, we're in discussion, as far as I'm concerned.
And this attorney told you, he specifically, that we're talking about additions or corrections to the minutes.
Well, that's, that was his opinion, it's a legal opinion, that's fine. I have no problem with it. I'm, I'm talking about approving these minutes. Because here's what happens, and this is very respectful to you, Chair. What happens is, if you vote for something, you're in favor of it. And I'm not in favor of this. And so, you need to know, folks need to know that this board member is very interested in the way we did it for 20 years. So, I bring that forward. Now, if it falls on deaf ears, it does, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I'm, I'm making my statement, you know, go forward. I would like to see this because thousands of times, you go, the public, legal, people in Tallahassee, they want to know a subject, how, what were they saying? Here's what they're saying. Malfeasance, feasance, mismanagement versus management, that's what we're talking about. So, you want to hear. Ms. Kelly says something, she says something. I want to, I, I want that for posterity, for somebody to say, oh, yeah, oh, look, that was brought up, she brought that up, that was, she was right, dead on target, like that. And it's the way it ought to be. And that's the way this board member's going to advance the concept. I saw it come out, three of them in a row, I looked back, wow, it wasn't cutting it, it just wasn't getting it. So, I'm just going forward with that. And now we can legal it out, that's fine, have at it, legal it out, I'll go any which way, but I'm not in favor of what's happening to our minutes. Especially these three.
Are you ready to vote?
I was gonna say, there's a couple things. We seem to be a split vote, Ms. Thoreau's not here. Also, in the past, because, I mean, lots of times, we just get up here and I can talk all day long, I can tell you about East Marion, you know, there were celebration and different things. But when something's extremely important to me, there have been times where I'll be like, Ms. Martina Lopez, put it in my notes, note whatever. So, maybe if there's something that a board member strongly suggests, maybe you could note it verbatim and just tell her what it is, rather than her trying to interpret what's, you know, you know, because a lot of times, you know, we just get up here, and not saying nothing's not important, but I do understand that sometimes things are important, like if a certain subject is brought up. So, maybe we gotta maybe be creative to help our secretary and just to make sense.
And I don't think she's against this. I don't think she's against it at all. I don't know, maybe she, I don't want to speak for it, she can speak.
But she's trying to interpret. She has a board member that is voting no on her interpretation. So, that's why we are here today. You know, when we start voting no because of minutes, you know, and it's all or nothing, then we're like, okay, then don't put them in. And then that's not right. So, maybe if something's extremely important to the board member, ask, or just type it, ask her to note it, and that way she'll know and not have to interpret what our point is or what we're trying to get across. Does that make, maybe make better?
I agree. I think you're asking the person that's taking the minutes to surmise all of your thoughts and all of your commentary and interpret it into what they hear or their perception. And it could still come out wrong, because you could say, that's not what I meant. So, if, if you're going to give it to her in writing, hey, give it to her in writing, I don't have an issue with that. I don't have an issue with that. But a lot of times, in this last year, we've had commentary that went for minutes on minutes on minutes that have been scattered, that have been all over the place. And you're asking that person to interpret all of those, those commentary, that's what it is, commentary, into what they think they heard versus what you meant to be heard.
Likewise, along, if I may
Yes, sir.
Reverend Cummings, along with that, I would suggest that if the board chooses to do that, that we, again, back to my sort of headline thing, I would, I would request or advise the board that it might be a wise idea to keep those as to what your comments are, as to sort of, I'm not going to say a one-liner, but just a
Bullet.
A bullet point, sort of conversation about what it is that you, that you brought up, or what item there was, as opposed to an explanation, or something that's subject to interpretation. Such that if one board member chooses not to, you know, put in what they talked about specifically, that it's not, you know, there's not something that's debate. The other thing I was going to bring up, because Ms. Campbell brought it up, was as to the board comments at the end, those are closing remarks, really. That's not a process of debate, therefore, it's not really governed by Robert's Rules of Order, other than rules of decorum for how we go about maintaining ourselves during it. That, but there's not, the rules for debate don't apply, because it's not motions being made and accepted at that time, unless specifically a motion is made. I would suggest that the board also consider a number of bylaws together, if it intends to change one, because it might be like changing the brakes on your car. If you change one wheel, the others might grab differently. So, just in this discussion here, you know, we, it brings into account the rule under Robert's rules that, you know, a member who has spoken twice on a particular question on the same day is exhausted to write the discussion for that question for the day. That no one can speak longer than 10 minutes. I mean, those, those factors, if those are items which need to be considered, weighed, and debated, those are things which are going to necessarily impact your bylaws. Because if anyone calls it to question, and I've had to try to become quite familiar with Robert's rules, when one board member says, here, Robert's rules don't allow for this, or Robert's rules do allow for that, they may well be right. And it may not be the way we've done it for quite some time, but it is in our bylaws that we will follow Robert's rules. So, if we want other bylaws, we're entitled to write them.
In a workshop, I mean, just have a workshop, no, that's, that would work for me. So, I, you know, we always want to do the right thing. That's, that's, it's that simple, and we do need to communicate up here, so.
If we were going by Robert's Rules of Order, everybody's spoken more than twice on this, on this issue. And we're just trying to move this along. Are we going to vote on it? Thank you. We called them, I've heard you called them.
Motion to close debate?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to close debate.
Vote on the motion to close debate?
Yes. There's a motion to close debate. And I don't think it needs a second, from my understanding.
Oh, you vote, yeah.
All in favor of closing debate, signify by aye. Aye.
Aye.
No.
No. And, and the only reason I'm voting no is because I still don't think we've resolved what we're going to vote on the minutes. We, we haven't resolved, if I'm going to say, here are the four things I would like added to board comments that said Allison Campbell said these things. I don't think we've, we've resolved that yet. And so, that's the only reason I'm voting no on us voting on the minutes. So, if we can get that resolved, then I'm fine.
Ms. Campbell, we've already said, if you have
I do, and I'm, and no one gave me the opportunity to share them. Do, would you like to share them?
They don't have to be shared, they were your minutes, they were already your, they were already your minutes.
But they're not included in the minutes we're trying to approve.
But you're going to email them to her, correct?
She already has them.
Okay.
I mean, that, that was my whole point. Every, at the end of every meeting, board, if you weren't aware, at the end of every meeting, while I have been including them in narrative form, I certainly can include them in headline form, so that does take that off of Ms. Martinez-Lopez. But I have included every single comment since I've been a board member, since the moment I became a board member, in a Word document, is emailed to her and to Mr. Davis, when he was doing it as well, immediately following my board comments. So, there wouldn't be any question as to what I said, what my thoughts were. I've always done that. So, that's why I have them, if I need to send them, or if I need to give the headlines, or whatever I need to do. But I believe, to Mr. Browning's point, as a part of record, that we have held for 20-plus years, that we don't make a change without this board actually weighing in on that decision.
Has it been 20 years?
The entire board is not here.
And that's my point. I understand, so.
We're not getting any traction, we're just wallowing in, we have been talking about this, we've been sitting here over an hour, and we're on the first set of minutes, and we, we know we're split, we don't, we're missing a member, but we keep rehashing it again and again, and we're not getting anywhere. So, why don't we save it for when we have another board member and then we can properly decide as a board what we're going to do? But we can talk, we're just talking and talking. We're not gaining anything by this at this moment.
Ms. Martinez-Lopez.
Why don't we just go ahead and vote on the minutes? They're going to fail.
That's what we've been trying to, that's what I've been trying to get done.
Well, we're in it, we're in, we're in it.
Ms. Martinez-Lopez is talking.
Okay, go ahead.
That's what I've been trying to get done, to vote on it, up or down? If it fails, it fails.
Fail the motion on each of those minutes. I do believe in the last board meeting, I did request the corrections or the additions for the July 26th, which I did not receive anything. So, therefore, that's why they were placed back on, I did not receive anything. I agree with Ms. Campbell. If you want your comments in there, it is extremely helpful that you send me that document in bullet form, so there is no misunderstanding. As I stated the last board meeting, I cannot decipher what you're saying once we've spoken about something for 45 minutes. My interpretation is my interpretation, which might not be yours, which then causes a problem, which is why we are where we are. Yes, we have been doing this for 20 years the same way, but now we've run into a crossroad on this. So, we need to come to a solution. So, the best solution is that each board member submits to me their comments either by the end of the board meeting or by the next day. If you don't, then your comments aren't in there. We can have that discussion. But I cannot decipher a 30-minute conversation in your comments and concerns that have gone on and on and have gone in different avenues. I mean, you're asking for an impossible task there. We've not had this problem in 20 years. Therefore, that's why we are where we are at this moment.
Thank you.
And Board Member Campbell, you've, my understanding is, what you're saying is, you've offered your corrections to the minutes would be that Word document that you have, right?
I have all of Ms. Campbell's
And so, the board could vote on
Exactly.
The minutes with that document being the amendment, correct? I mean, I'm asking, that's entirely within all of your, that's not my decision, that's entirely you.
That would be fine with me, Ms. Martinez-Lopez has all of my comments. And if we're including them, then that, that would be what I would prefer.
Is that your correction? That's what
That would be, sure.
That's what I'm asking for, if that's your correction.
Okay, then I amend my motion to say, I would, motion to approve July 26th, 2022 school board meeting minutes, including the board commentary that Ms. Martinez-Lopez has of mine.
That was submitted electronically.
Yeah, that was submitted electronically.
To Ms. Martinez-Lopez.
To Ms., yeah, that day.
She has an amended motion, you have amended second.
Second.
Motion has been amended and seconded, properly seconded. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Polls have the same sign.
No.
Minutes passed 3-1. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 9th, 2022 school board meeting?
August 4th, excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry, August 4th, administrative briefing and work session.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Oh, Chair. Uh, Chair, I'll just indicate that I'm in the same position on this and, and on the following one. Thank you.
Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Board Chair, excuse me. Just to make sure for clarity, we're going to amend this second set of minutes because comments aren't in there. Ms. Campbell, is your correction that you want your minutes added, your comments added to the August 4th? So it would be, we're amending this. We're not approving this as is.
So the work session, I don't think I send you comments on work sessions. I, I think it's just on board meetings.
You didn't send me anything? Okay.
Not on work sessions.
Yes. So the amended motion for that was for, just for that July 26th.
Right. Okay.
There is not amended one for the work session.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, have the same sign.
No.
Passed this, passed this three, one. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 9th, 2022 school board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Second by Board Vice Chair Campbell.
As amended?
As amended, yes.
Thank you. So let's, let's undo that motion. You make the motion.
Okay. Motion to approve the August 9th school board meeting minutes, including the electronic record of my board comments that Ms. Martinez Lopez has received.
We have a motion. I need a second. Seconded by Board Member King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Yes, Chair. So I'll, I'll take this opportunity just to say that I believe this is a gross mistake for the board's communication, and that we can, we, we must, in my opinion, we must have a workshop on this issue and have it be decided in a considered way. And that would make things move along, because that's all we were really looking for, is some clarity on a breaking of a precedent, 20-year precedent. And I'd just like to say that I, now I see why Ms. Campbell's comments are so clear. Wow. It's beautiful. It's absolutely beautiful. So, and they've been very, very helpful. So communications is the whole key to being on a board, as far as I'm concerned. All right. Thank you. That'll, I, I just wanted to make those points.
Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, have the same sign.
No.
Passed this three, one. I'll now ask the school board to turn to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board today.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. In compliance with Section 286.000114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at that, at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 PM. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board makes seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees, attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator or staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of the meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that includes my, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gary White?
I'm Gary White, 9280 Southwest 96 Court Road, Ocala, Florida. Can you hear me? I'm having a terrible time hearing in here tonight. I don't want to blame it on being older, but that might be it. I'll go home and watch that last discussion on TV with it turned up. I think it was most interesting. I represent Tea Party. We come here to listen to what you have to say and how you react to situations. And I'm so glad you give us the opportunity to oversee your deliberations. Our present budget for this upcoming year is $905 million. That's just slightly short of a billion. That actually means that the school budget is larger than the county budget. Close. So we now have $25 billion worth of taxable real estate. At the low part, where the board asked us to vote for this ad valorem tax of one mil, we were at $12 billion. Our actual, over those times, that actual taxable real estate has almost, well, it has doubled. We find that now it is not necessary to add any taxable situations to the people of Marion County. We've gone from 56 in '21, 56 out of 69 in '22, and now we're 59th. We have made, the one mil has never made the difference, except at the first, when you ask us and we gave it to you, in helping school kids get instruments and artwork and things that were desperately needed at the time. We've gone from $850 billion, million dollars, to $905 million, and that should have been leveled in to the, to the amount of money that this ad valorem tax will raise. It is a highly unnecessary and, and unneeded tax. It should be in the budget. And next time y'all want a tax, a one mil tax, and you know it's an emergency, and you know you can ask for it, then we'll be ready to trust you again and say, okay, you said you really need it. Now you need it. I can give you reasons why you don't, shouldn't need it. The $25 billion taxable real estate, up from $12 billion taxable real estate, the large increase in the school budget this year, $905 million. Still asking to examine, examine always. I want to just leave you with a story. I think I can do it in a minute forty-eight. Yesterday was Columbus Day. Columbus was Hispanic. He came from Spain. He came to the Bahamas. There's lots of lies about Columbus, and it's such a shame. He ran into the Tiana Indians, the Cara Indians, and the Cana Indians. The Cana Indians and the Cara Indians were cannibals. As a matter of fact, that's where the word cannibal comes from, is the Cana Indians. They would steal women from the Tiana Indians, whom Columbus was having a good monetary relationship with, fair, fair situation back and forth, and put them in little huts and eat their babies. And, and those babies were considered the delicacy of the time. Columbus went back to Spain, taking Tiana Indians back and introducing them to Queen Elizabeth. Not Queen Elizabeth, I'm sorry, Isabella, Queen Isabella. As a matter of fact, a big 20-foot picture is on the wall of the Capitol Building, showing him introducing those people to her. When he got back from Spain, they had burnt down the cast, the fort and eaten and killed all the people that he left behind. Columbus was a good and honest man, and he did things of the times which we're not in agreement with. And I thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Ms. Martinez Lopez? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C. 7.1 through C. 17.1, with the exception of items D. 18.1, D. 18.2, D. 18.3, D. 18.4, D. 18.5, and D. 18.6 that have been placed on discussion, and item C. 7.1, C. 8.1, C. 9.1, C. 9.2, C. 10.1, and C. 11.1, that have been pulled and placed on discussion, and item C. 14.1, that has been withdrawn completely from the agenda. Have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
I'll second for discussion.
There is no discussion in consent agenda, sir.
There'll be no discussion?
There is no discussion. Are you seconding?
On the item? No, I'll withdraw my second.
So is the motion going to fail for lack of a second? It's the consent agenda item. Correct? Am I correct, Chair Cummings?
I'll double check here, but that would be my understanding. I've not had it happen before.
Okay. So Superintendent, all the consent agenda items just failed. May I have a motion to approve grant application title four, Part A, Student Support and Academic Enrichment, SSAE. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Any discussion?
Help me, Chair. Our, our ta, okay, here we go. Here we go. We've gone to 18.1. Yeah, okay. Yes, thank you.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye. I have discussion, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, maintain a moment. Jumped, jumped ahead on me there. I was, I was stuck on number six, 7.1. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, yes. We're on, the board is caught up here. Let's see, we're on 18.1. Yes. Okay, here we go. Incredibly important item. $2 million. And it's going to science, technology, CAD computers. This is, this is for, it's a grant. It's, it's really exciting. When, when you're in engineering, this is where you live your life in this digital world today. And this is $2.5 million of effort in this digital learning field, CAD. That's all design, is a building, a bridge, anything you're doing. Our graduates, this is top drawer material and a good use of computers. That microphone is okay. A good use of computers and digital learning. I'm not in favor of it over in the normal reading, writing, arithmetic, digital learning instruction, but I am adamant for it in this arena. Thank you, Chair.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment to the agreement with Bruber Financial Services Inc., DBA LEO. Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. We're in 18.2. Yes. Okay. This is, again, important to note, there's a lot of problems that have gone on over the years, where the poorer folks have spent more because they just didn't have the ability to perform, for example, an account to write a check. So they're out there doing a, a, a money order or something like that, which, which just drives up the cost of everything. This is covering the cost of credit card. So it's very easy to facilitate folks doing business with the school district, especially on events and that type of thing. So this is, this is a home run. It's where we need to go. And I applaud the district in pulling this together. Thank you, Chair.
Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign, passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the renewed bid of 3833 GM Network Cable Installation Services Term Contract?
Second.
Moved by Board Member King, seconded by Board Member Browning. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Yes, Chair, thank you. This is a, this is an awful lot of money. This is close to a half million dollars, $400,000 to be exact. And cable does work, and it has worked, and it will work in certain high-density situations. However, I, I, low-earth orbit satellite internet dishes are actually outperforming or performing at the, at this level, and at a price that is significantly different. If, if, say, every school had this, I think we're at $500 versus $100, or 110. So I would just like to say, just everybody beyond, beyond board, there are better solutions that are coming ahead. And I'm not in favor of automatically going by old technology, or technology that does not adapt itself to a, to a, to a county our size. If we were more congested, you know, condensed, that'd be one thing, kind of like the villages, or maybe downtown Ocala, that type, that type of thing. Okay, yes. But the idea of cable under the ground, it's a little bit passe. Not, not gone, but a little bit passe, and certainly awfully expensive. This isn't a slam dunk, but it's certainly going in that direction. And I, I would like to see it looked at a lot closer. Five to one, it appears on the surface, more expensive than new low-earth orbit. And we are, we are in a zone where that works. And there's more than one company that is delving into that. There's one company, SpaceX, which is very, very big in it. But that's something that we really need to look at. $300,000 difference is a big, big amount of money, and it'll go a long way toward buying musical instruments and, and that type of thing, that, that we're going out and asking for extra funds for. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, have the same sign?
No.
Passed this three, one. May I have a motion to approve the agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services Inc.?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member, Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Any discussion?
Yes, Chair. I'll be brief with this, but the idea, this is 300 and almost, almost $400,000, $375,000. Big dollars, I'd like to see a bid challenge. It does a couple of things. It keeps the dollars down. It improves potentially the educational value of anything we do. It improves potentially the educational value of anything we do, and it protects all parties. It protects some vendor that's doing a great job, and historically, these folks have done a great job. But it protects them from having a no-bid situation because a no-bid situation can be interpreted as a favorite son scenario. So I'm in favor of going ahead, but not in favor of this going through routinely year after year, and I am very pleased to see that it's up for discussion. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign?
Board Chair, at your discretion.
Go ahead.
You, I indicated I would need a moment to conduct research to give a proper answer regarding the consent item agenda, a consent agenda item that did not receive a second. And under Robert's Rules of Order, it indicates that after a motion has been made, another member who wishes to be considered, wishes it to be considered, says, "I second the motion, I second it," or even second without obtaining the floor, and in small assemblies without rising. That's Robert's Rules of Order. The requirement of a second is for the chair's guidance as to whether he should state the question on the motion, thus placing it before the assembly. Its purpose is to prevent time from being consumed by the assemblies having to dispose of a motion that only one person wants to see introduced. So it does indicate that after a motion has been made, that the chair must be sure that all have heard it before proceeding to other business. In such a case, the chair normally asks, "Is there a second to this motion?" He may repeat the motion before doing so. A second implies that the seconder agrees that the motion should come before the meeting, which is why the chair typically abstains. So as long as you are insured yourself that everyone has heard the motion and understands what the motion is for, you may request a second and then proceed to discussion and vote if a second is given. If a second is not given, the motion dies for lack of second.
So, so for the record, there was no second.
Right, so what I'm saying is that you should.
Do I need to restate that?
Restate the motion and clarify what the motion is? And if there's no second, then it dies.
May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C seven point one through seventeen, C seventeen point one, with the exception of items D eighteen point one, D eighteen point two, D eighteen point three, D eighteen point four, D eighteen point five, and D eighteen point six that have been placed on a discussion, and items C seven point one, C eight point one, C nine point one, C nine point two, C ten point one, and C eleven point one that have been pulled and placed on a discussion, and item C fourteen point one that has been withdrawn completely from the agenda. There was a motion made by Vice Chair Campbell. There was no second.
There was a second by Browning.
You withdrew your second.
Well after, I was unable to speak.
So there's no second.
Consent agenda item is not a discussion item. So under parliamentary procedure, strictly speaking, discussions, I'm reading from Robert's Rules of Order, discussions of any subject is permitted only with reference to a pending motion. When necessary, a motion can be prefaced by a few words of explanation, which may not become a speech, or a member can first request information. However, consent agenda items approval or the lack thereof is not a, is not a debatable motion.
Yeah, well, I can make a, I can make a simple comment. That's all I wanted to do anyhow.
It's not a debatable motion, so.
Debatable, okay. For the, for the sake of cordiality, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Motion has been properly made and seconded. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Passes four zero. All right. Which one are we on, Elena? Eighteen point five. May I have a motion to approve the HVAC replacement at North Marion Middle School Deductive Change Order Number One, Amendment Number One, Project Number Twenty-two dash one zero zero.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice, motion by Board Member King, seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Any discussion? There have been none. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign, passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the Addendum Agreement Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Board Member King. Any discussion?
Yes, Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. This, this item is near and dear to my heart. It's nutrition, it's setting the right example, it's a lot of money, over half million dollars. It's vegetables and proper eating. Some folks might not even get this particular health program. The governor, the cabinet, everybody's pushes in this direction, and I, I just, I'm really impressed by a half million dollars of vegetables that go. So often, we get into a, some kind of fast food or some, some sort of a scenario that may not lend themselves to the healthiest possible choices. Blood pressure, obesity issues. This is, this is absolutely dead-on target, and over a half million dollars of high-end quality dietary items, fresh fruits and vegetables. I, I think it's, I think it's a home run. I'm very, very pleased to see this, and I'm pleased to see it out on the, on the agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve school improvement? These items were pulled. May I have a motion to approve school improvement plans for the 2022-2023 fiscal year?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Brown, you pull this for discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. A lot of materials today. Okay. The, the key to this, this item is the school, this is school improvement plans, but it's, it's utilization of this strategic plan, which is going forward, and it, this falls under student success. It's, we really, before we use that plan, we must go back into it, and we must address the fundamental problems that are associated with the baseline. And people just do not realize the issue that's, that's here. I was staggered when I saw it as a board member, and that is the starting baseline point on any of these items on this five-year plan. The strategic plan goal. The goals are actually below what I would consider failure. Not that we don't have, we aren't trying, striving for a hundred percent, but if we're, if we're no higher than, say, fifty-seven, fifty-six, sixty-three, sixty percent achievement, I have a real problem in the plan itself getting traction without a complete rework of the baseline. It's just too easy to go forward and say, "Well, Board Member Browning, you are in favor of that." And I'm looking at the items. I don't know if everybody's seen this. You've got to go back to last week's workshop, and I believe we might have done a little bit on, a little bit on it before that, but something like thirty-six percent success. Or that's a low one, that's kind of overdoing, but fifty-six percent success, forty-seven percent success. The, the numbers are so low. And the presentation brought in the idea that the state of Florida is in these baseline numbers, so much so that something that is, if we have a baseline of, say, forty-three percent success, and we're trying to get to sixty percent, that would mean a complete failure in any operation. I don't care what it is. If it was in the military, you'd be, you'd be in somebody's prison camp. This is, it's just like, who in the world would ever think that something down around half failure is close to a B? One point off a B, for example? So where I need to go with this is, if we're going to go down this road in any regard, we've got to first dig back into it, and we've got to look at the reasons why we're failing so bad. Fifty percent achievement is a failure to me. So I, I'm just, I'm crushed by the, the level of of the lack of achievement, the level of failure. I'm just crushed by it. I, I can't believe it personally. So in order to go down this road and go at these goals and use them as goals, this board member needs to go back and bang on this really, really hard in some workshops. Now, I know I don't, I won't be on the board for a long time, but the board needs to do that and absolutely not tolerate. I've spoken with some senators, I've got calls into a number of folks on this, and I've just been extremely busy since that last meeting with school board material. It seems like everything is just coming due at one time. But this is just staggeringly not viable in any endeavor. And I don't know how we got here as a public school system. So I'm, I'm not in favor of using it. I'm not in favor of utilizing it in any regard because that admits that we're kind of going with this baseline of failure. I want to see Manny Diaz, I want to see the governor, I want to see the legislators, I want to see everybody, all the school boards. Every school board in, in the state of Florida really needs to reassess their position. So that's, I'm, I'm still staggered over it. Thank you, Chair.
Vice Chair Campbell.
So without elaborating too much on some of that commentary, I need to express a couple of things. First of all, the definition of the word baseline is a starting point used for comparison. We're not changing the baseline because the baseline is what it is. We understand that our baseline is not where our benchmark, maybe we're mis, mischaracterizing what we're actually trying to say. We understand that our benchmark is something much higher in a level that we're wanting to achieve, but our baseline is what it is. The fact that our baseline is not where we want it to be is obvious. Thus why we have a five-year strategic plan. That I also want to stress, the five-year strategic plan that we are getting updates on was approved by this school board on November ninth, two thousand twenty-one. That was eleven months ago, when all five of us were here and all five of us approved it. We've been hearing updates in our work sessions, and the team brought to us in this past work session additions and corrections and changes they wanted to make to it, and that's what we're seeing on a monthly basis. So I'm grateful we have a strategic plan. I'm grateful we have a baseline because we know where we need to go from there. All of these school improvement plans, and frankly, holding them up tonight and not voting for them is going to be a mistake. School improvement plans are looked at by our school advisory councils. If anyone has ever sat on one of those, you would know what that looks like and be a part of that process. The school advisory council, made up of parents and faculty and, and students even, actually look over a school's plan as to how they want to move the needle on multiple different areas. And so delving into each one of these, you can look at school by school, and I have in this agenda item. I'm not certain that that has been done by everyone, but I did look at some of them and to see, especially in my district, where they are, where they're wanting to go, what those changes are they're wanting to do and wanting to make. And the purpose of the school improvement plan is to track what happens from baseline to benchmark. And so I'm ready to vote.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign?
No.
Passes three one. May I have a motion to approve the 2022-2023 Professional Learning Catalog? Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Brown, you pull for discussion?
Yes, is this nine point?
Nineteen point two.
Nineteen point two. And what happened in nineteen point one?
That's what we just voted on, that you voted down.
Okay, okay, nineteen. Nineteen one, okay, got it. Excellent. Okay, here we go, nineteen two. Digital learning, I believe, is a mistake if it isn't in the technical realm. Now, this is a very broad, a broad comment, but the idea of learning on a screen when you have a teacher right there, and I see it more and more in, in schools when I'm visiting, the, the, the idea of one-on-one with a teacher is where we have to go. If you have to do digital, okay, I got it. This isn't terribly expensive, but I, I see us as a species moving in a direction of detachment from hu, human-to-human contact. And if it's not absolutely necessary, I'm against it. It just, I think it's one of the reasons why we're failing so bad to educate this new generation that's come up in the digital age. Now, if it moves over into something technical like CAD or engineering or math, I get it. That really does pay off. But I don't, or, 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 there are other, other situations, but that one, that, the idea of moving in the direction, because I see so many of these go through, and I'm thinking, wow, why, you know, we have a, we have a teacher, they're educated, they're in the business. I think that's why we're losing our teachers, because now we're, we buy a program and it comes in, and it, it like does the job, but it's, it's, it's like you're in a Zoom meeting and there's no reason for the Zoom meeting. You're probably going backwards. So I'm, I'm not in favor of that type of thing. I'm not crushed if it passes because it's, it's fine, you know, to move ahead. We're sort of going in that direction, but I think it is responsible for some of our current state of failure. Thank you, Chair.
Vice Chair.
Just for clarification, to clear this up for the public if they may have been confused, this actually is a professional learning catalog for our adult learners, for our teachers, our administration.
for our adult learners, for our teachers, our administrators. And as someone on this school board who is currently receiving an online doctorate, solely online, not face-to-face, I can assure you, online learning is effective, especially for adult learners, and I'm ready to vote.
Thank you.
Yes, and there's no fiscal impact.
Thank you.
Top of that.
Thank you. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Polls have the same sign.
No.
Passes three, one. We have a motion to approve the grand approval of Southwest Florida Water Management District.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brown, you pull for discussion.
Yes.
Nineteen point three?
Yes. Okay, Southwest, Southwest Water Management. Got a different number, but that's okay. Just the item I'd like to add is there is so much misinformation that comes out of, I'm just going to say, the standard rhetoric on like springs protection. I was on the Springs Protection Board for the Marion County. I've been very heavily involved in some of these, some of these subjects. We're not getting the full, the full story. And I'd like some way to bring forward the idea that there's a much more detailed story. For example, I'll just use a couple of examples. All of the waste, processed sewage waste out of Gainesville, goes to a place called Canapaha. And that process sewer affluent, very, very high, almost to a hundred parts per million sometimes, maybe even, maybe ten to fifty, it just all depends, gets injected into the aquifer and it comes down here. Now, why is that important to bring forward? We're teaching kids about these environmental issues. And it's important to see these things skeptically because often it sounds like it's a great thing until you really find out why there's algae in the springs, for example. Fourteen million gallons a day goes down into the aquifer. To catch the underground streams goes straight in, straight pipeline right into the springs. We have water retention here close by that goes right straight to the springs. It's about a twenty-foot drop down to the underwater springs and boom, goes right into Silver Springs. Same thing happens to a little different degree over in the Rainbow. And this is Southwest Water Management, so it's sort of in that area. But my point is, we've got to look at these things. Don't just take it on face value, what's being said. Because some of these things, they've got the political horsepower to push them through, and they're just not right. I'll give you another example. Jacksonville's got processed sewer affluent going straight in to the bay up there. And it's called a subaqueous distribution center. It just means that the big old pipe goes down and it goes out into five, or three to five outlets. My point is, we've got to be skeptical and know that there's, don't take this stuff hook, line, and sinker just because it looks pretty. And good things are happening. If you're into this and it's an important area for you academically, dig deeper and you'll be really glad you did. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Any further discussion? All in favor signify.
I just want to say what they'll be doing. And this is an educational program where teachers will learn about water resources through hands-on investigative and easy-to-use activities. And when they go there, they're actually going to kayak the Rainbow River. And they're going to take pictures and videos and submit that, you know, for their standards and stuff like that. So it's pretty hands-on and stuff like that. I just wanted to share what that is because it was kind of interesting discussion. Okay.
Thank you, Board Member King. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Polls have the same sign, pass unanimously. We have a motion to approve the special data share agreement with Imagine Learning LLC.
Where we are. Okay, motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Brown, you pull for discussion.
Yes, say the number of this one again. My numbers have gotten off.
Nineteen point four. Consent now C nine point two. It was in the consent agenda, C nine point two.
Special data share agreement.
Which is right here.
Okay, here we go. Thank you. It's been a long night.
Yes, it has.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Okay. Yes, again, digital learning in the, out in the, in the arena outside of CAD, engineering, mathematics, technical. I just, I'm troubled by it. I, this board member would like to see more hands-on, person-to-person, less of this type of effort. It's okay. It can be okay. It can be helpful on certain levels, especially after hours if you're failing or something. There are technical uses of it. I'm not totally against it. But we've got to think in terms of, we're humans and we've got to go teacher to student. And anything that gets in the way like that, these things sound so great. This one's out of Arizona. It's, it behooves us to go face-to-face like we were educated. And we were not educated on a TV screen. And I'm just in favor of, I can go with it. But I'm, I'd say we've got to be careful. And from an elderly person, probably the most elderly on this board, we've got to watch out for the future generations and not just put them, hook them up with digital, digital instruction. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Polls have the same sign, pass unanimously. We have a motion to approve the agreement with Technical and Educational Training Aids Corp.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brown, you pull for discussion.
Yes, give me the number on this one.
C ten point one is probably what you're looking for.
Yeah, ten point one, exactly. Thank you. Yes, okay. Now, this really falls into the realm. It's not huge money, but it falls into the realm of where digital shines. That is CAD, design, computerized engineering. This is, this is the future. This, with this, our students will fit properly in the future from a productivity point of view. I'm one hundred percent in favor of this. And it's a complete home run and it's the proper use. But with success with this, I don't want it to go down into some of these other areas, reading, writing, and arithmetic. And I've made that point. But I'm very in favor of this. And without it, you will not succeed in the future. So I'm one hundred percent, thank you, a hundred percent in favor. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Polls have the same sign, pass unanimously. We have a motion to approve disposition of tangible property.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
I'll second.
Seconded by Board Member Brownie. Mr. Brown, you pull for discussion.
Yes, I just want to make the comment. I have yet to see a real program come out. But I think, I think the board is getting the flavor of there are opportunities in used goods. There are opportunities for revenue and they need to be cultured. They need to be developed. There's also educational opportunities because sales, marketing. Wow, what a, at least even to pay for that. I love revenue centers. And we go through so much material that I think there's a beautiful opportunity here. I've yet to be able to sell the concept that I'm pushing. But there's money to be mined here. And so let's keep that in mind as we go forward. And I'll try to push on it when I'm off the board from some other directions. So I'm happy with this. However, I would like to see education and revenue be enhanced utilizing the disposition of tangible property. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass unanimously. The next special administrative briefing and work session is scheduled on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two at nine AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss Niola updates. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. The purpose of the work session is to discuss achieve two thousand twenty-six, goal one updates, the interlocal agreement, and the safe schools agreement proposal. A special administrative briefing and work session has been scheduled for October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two at nine AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss Niola policy updates. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do you have any comments or concerns?
No, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Members of the board, just a few brief business items. First, the, as you just stated, Chair, goal one will be reintroduced again on October twentieth of the work session. We're going to go back through and update the board on all of those strategic plan updates to increase our outcomes for our students. And so I also wanted to draw your attention again to what I shared in the briefing last week with all of you, that our goals now include strategic plan items of note in each of our board action items. So you'll see that in there. Also, on October twentieth, we have the ICROC meeting at four PM. The meeting has been moved back in consultation with Dr. Gonzalez, the Chair of ICROC, back to MTI, and again, will be televised. But it will be at four PM after our work session concludes at four PM at MTI. Last item, I wanted to update all of you on. This is a change from the last time I briefed you all. The Commissioner Diaz from the Florida Department of Education and the Chancellor Oliva called the superintendents to a phone conference the end of last week to talk about Hurricane Ian and its impact and the statutes related to meeting the requirements for student schedules. They reiterated that we just need to ensure that we have met the nine hundred hours that are in our statute. And I can tell you this evening that we have double and triple-checked this based on those changes that we made to the current calendar this year. We were very intentional around that. We have met those requirements, so no additional makeup is needed. So that is a change. We have done that. So that's another reason why we are very careful to include extra minutes in our time. So we have met all requirements according to the state. And the state says we need to do nothing additional at this time. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Attorney Powers?
Yes, I wanted to inform board members that for the upcoming Niola policy updates on the seventeenth and twenty-fourth, we will be providing each member of the board with electronic copies of all of the individual policies that will be updated along with the edits are proposed. Again, these are primarily and predominantly legal updates. And it will be, we'll certainly note where it is. Anything beyond a legal update but a staff-requested update so that the board can discuss to the degree they wish on each of the items. I will break them up so that they are not repetitive. And also because the second batch, there are some which depend upon our entry of ones for the first. So for the seventeenth, I will provide probably two-thirds of all policies. And then whatever's remaining from those along with the remaining one-third, I'll provide a couple of days after that so that you'll have sort of two chunks to, for more easily, to be more easily digested, so to speak. And of course, any individual board member that has a concern with where something comes from or where it's located or anything like that can reach out to me. And I'll be happy, myself or my paralegal will be happy to direct you as to where to get the remainder of that information prior to the meeting.
Thank you, Attorney Powers.
Chair, if I may. Thank you, Chair. And members of the board, Ms. Martinez Lopez caught my error. When I mentioned ICROC, it's back to MTC. We were at MTI. So thank you, Ms. Martinez Lopez. Back to MTC for ICROC. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. Board comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hope these get recorded. This is, we're at a, I have a special treat for the board. And it comes from the neighborhood. Ms. Hattie Hanks, eighty-seven years old, lives in the Stanton Weersdale area. Put together a, quite an elaborate program. Ms. Bozier, Altamiz Bozier, put together a rather elaborate, and I'll just hold these up. These are photos. Excuse me. These are photos, and these will go in the record and to the superintendent for copies for everyone. But this is from the neighborhood and...
Let me hold, pause.
Yes, sir.
So if this is something that you want to have included in your board comments for the record, just please just preface that right now, that you want those?
Yes, yes, that...
That way, we're clear on what you want.
Great, great, yes. And these will also go to the superintendent to make copies for you all according to sunshine law.
If you're saying that you want it for the record, it needs to go to the board clerk so that she can enter them into the records.
Well, we can do that. We can do that, Chair. Now, that's a separate, that's the minutes issue. This is, this is to the superintendent to get, to be able to make copies for all of you all. Because these came directly from the residents. And each has, like this is Altamiz Bozier, the roads run beside the schools used to be maintained by the county. It's their heartfelt comments. And they relate to issues that tie into school walk-in zone and how children get to school. So we've talked about it. And this group asked me to bring forward, here's one large retention pun. This is an area where the kids have to walk through water that washes across and into the roads that they live on. And they've got to walk through this. they've got to walk through this. It's just totally unacceptable. It's walk-in zone materials. There's comments on each one of these, and from the neighborhood, from the folks that have lived there, generation after generation. So if you all would, just lean back and take a look, and some of you have been there, some of you haven't been down some of these streets, if you would. Mr. Christian, go ahead and fire that off, and then I'll have a closing comment.
Is this an auto-visual presentation?
It is.
Okay. In that case, it would be appropriate for the board chair to, if we can pause for a moment, to ask or for a motion to be made to extend the limit imposed by Roberts Rules of Order for a greater than 10 minutes. And then if that motion passes, then we can proceed forward, unless this is a brief clip.
It showed it was seven minutes.
Yeah, it's seven minutes, so.
Okay, so, all right.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Powers.
Just gives you a general idea between white and black in that area. This school was built in segregation. the idea of a 1904 survey, and these individuals coming, Ms. Hattie came down from the Carolinas, she's 87 now, wanted to come and speak, but was having, has issues in terms of time. I have another Earl Terry, he's a, he said, "Please extend." My wish is, what I would like to see happen is the funds come back to the residents that have not been spent since the school went in. When he was a little boy, and he's sitting, I will say, we had the military folks, he has a bullet in his back from the Viet Cong, and it's close to his spine, and he has trouble spending time in a standing position to come and speak. But he said, "Please extend my comments." We, in 1955, I was a kid down there, and it's worse now than it was then, in a walk-in zone, and snakes, mosquitoes, all these different problems. And the cover image that you see on this, that while he's working on it, is from the Hilton, not Hilton, that's the Hyatt down in Tampa. It's a view. I was working on it. It ends up being sort of a non-stop situat-, are you ready? Yes, go. Go, sir. We want to stay in the lawyer's timeframe.
No, I didn't deduct any of your, your pause.
Call to action, Stanton Wearsdale.
This is the front of the school right here.
Don Browning. I'm the District Two Representative to the Marion County School Board. I want to talk today about Stanton Wearsdale School and some serious problems that we have in that neighborhood. The 2,000 yards around the school is small. It's been underserved.
I can narrate it, but these little, these little, the white lines are the little tiny roads that were used for 50 or 100 years.
...and we just have to do better. In order to be safe.
That's the school.
Call to action, Stanton Wearsdale. Hello, this is Don Browning. I'm the District Two Representative to the Marion County School Board. I want to talk today about Stanton Wearsdale School and some serious problems that we have in...
To run through it and to get it figured, and some of these folks have gone out of town and were unable to attend, but they really do want to get their message across to the board that this is simple. It's safe schools, it's signs, crosswalks, that type of thing in front of the school, and they will not take no for an answer.
A call to action, Stanton Wearsdale. Hello, this is Don Browning. I'm the District Two Representative to the Marion County School Board. I want to talk today about...
That's okay, that's okay.
Stanton Wearsdale School and some serious problems.
And now, I have these, and again, I will give these to the, to the, let me get myself organized here. These are, this is a petition from, petition from the neighborhood. Ms. Hattie Hanks, we've got, we've got a school bus driver that's been 11 years, I believe, one of the folks in the neighborhood. She says, "My babies need to be able, my, these grandkids," this is their words, "they need to be able to go to school without being hit by cars. They need to be able to be as safe as anyone." They've asked, they're asking for federal civil rights issues to be addressed, fix the problem. No more excuses. 65 years, there've been excuses. They say, "My name is Hattie Hanks. I am organizing this communication to you folks at the school board. I know you don't do roads, but you are responsible for the safe walk-in zone. I ask you, please, give us equal service that has been denied to folks that have moved here over the last century. I am 87 years old, years young, and cannot sit in your meeting after traveling up to Ocala. Ms. Sarah Gavins and others at the Stanton Wearsdale School area ask you to consider the following," and they have a list. "We want," and they say they want to use the first person, "I am speaking in the first person to let you know that I and the other black folks are speaking from our hearts, and we mean what we say. I want a safe walk-in zone for our neighborhood." It's only about 25 feet to the road. It was built in, to the school, it was built in 1956. We walk under these main, under-maintained roads during segregation, and then under separate but equal roads. After all these generations, we still do not have equal roads or sidewalk drainage for the children to walk. I want safe school signs. I want devices that are at all other schools built as white schools during that segregation time. Item number two, I want safe schools, dangerous situations fixed, signs installed. We'll go down to the next one, 87 years young, very, very heartfelt. We've got unsafe zone, please, again, no excuses. We know in the past, black areas did not receive normal, safe, walk-zone amenities, and those days are long past. We now need actual safe schools. No double talk. Mosquitoes, water is flowing from the concentrated pesticide washing area, and our children have to walk through it. What is a decades superfund site-like pollution of commercial properties, the school district has the authority to stop these dangers to our students. Mosquitoes are said by the governor to carry the Nile virus. We keep getting, let's see, so please stop sending stormwater from all white nearby areas into our black school walk-in zone. We need safe schools. Please act now. The school was built in segregated days, 85 years ago. We only want safety like is delivered at every other school. Please make this walk-in zone safe. Do not pass these concerns off to the trash can of excuses. And I have a long list of signees, the folks that live there and raise these children. So that's enough. We'll do the video at the next meeting, but that gets the point across that I can bring this forward. Some of these people are unable to attend. So I volunteered to bring that, and I just ask on their behalf for equal treatment at the Stanton Wearsdale School. Internally, it has five of the six items are meeting the unitary status. Transportation, number one, is not meeting unitary status. It's very clear, very easy to see by these, and they're short. They're shorter than some driveways. These are short little areas, and no one individual has the right, because these are roads. So no one individual has the right to go out there and start putting stop signs in. So we have to meet our obligation, and then let the county commission figure out meeting their obligations. But our obligations are to make sure that unitary status is met. We say it has been met, it must be met. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Brownie. Board Member King?
Yes. I would like to talk a little bit this evening about the referendum tax that is coming up. It was addressed a little bit tonight, but I guess, you know, it's getting closer to November, and it's starting to get hyped up a little bit. So I would just like to share some thoughts. As was shared tonight, our school district, we do have a budget of $905 million, and that is hefty, and that is the largest we have ever seen. But it's also important that we remember that we are receiving ESR dollars. They're federal dollars that are from when COVID and the pandemic was pushing through. So I believe it was like in the amount of $114 or $117 million extra dollars that we typically would not have. So right now, when we look at that number as it is hefty, and we're so grateful for it, it is bloated. And so in about a year from now, we're not going to have that money. And the reason why this board is asking for the referendum tax is because it is going to make sure that our students are provided with art and music, P.E., our media center assistance, make sure that we have our class size amendments. That's extremely important that we're meeting that, and also our vocational studies. And when I was younger, and probably when most of you were younger, we all had access to these wonderful programs, including the vocational programs. And somewhere along the line, you know, with money or importance, they went away. So I had those wonderful programs. My own children had those wonderful programs, and I think it's important that your children and your students in our community has access to all these wonderful programs. And it's also brought up, you know, the county makes, has less, that we have more money than the county, and that is true. But I want to also remind us with this bloated budget that we have right now, that for 44,000 students, we are providing transportation twice a day, every day for them. We're feeding them. We're providing buildings, electricity, power. And also, we are also paying 7,000 employees, or I'm not sure what the exact number is, you know, for their salaries. So I just want us to be very transparent and clear where those dollars go, where they have been going. And I just wanted to bring that up because I, again, it's starting to ramp up. November is right around the corner, and I understand how difficult it is right now. Nobody wants an extra tax. Times are tough, and it's hard to budget, you know, things in. But at what sacrifice, you know, so I just wanted to share that, and that's what I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Bye, Chair.
Thank you. I wasn't intending to mention anything about the inaccuracies that were displayed tonight about the referendum, but I will take a little bit of point of privilege to say, our budget actually is not 905 million, it is 899. And I know that's not very different, but when we're talking millions of dollars, it is. It's less than 900. It's just under 900. But Marion County's is 1.2 billion. So I just want to ensure that we're actually talking about accuracies. We are not larger than Marion County's budget this year. You know why? Because they also receive COVID relief dollars. So theirs also is bloated. So I wasn't intending to talk about that. I know there have been a lot of inaccuracies that are floating around the county right now, talking about how large the budget has grown. In addition to the ESR dollars, as Ms. King has elaborated, additionally, the school district is now a fully funded self-help plan. So our fully funded, self-funded insurance plan also is a dollar amount that we're carrying on our budget year over year that we didn't use to carry. And so that also makes our budget look more inflated than it actually is. And the other inaccuracy that I've seen is the rating of the school district. We are not 61st. We are not in the 60s even, out of 67 counties. So just the numbers that are being thrown around are strategic rhetoric being used that is just frankly inaccurate. And so we've shared multiple times what the accuracies are. That is not what I intended to talk about, but thank you for bringing it up, Ms. King, because I'm tired of the inaccuracy, frankly. It's time we start looking at Department of Education rankings, as well as actual real numbers, and the dialogue that we've had in our budget workshops about that. So, to my comments I was intending to make. Tonight, we approved, during the consent agenda, when we finally got to it, we approved internal audits for schools and departments. And I want to say a special kudos to Anthony Spar, Ward Highlands, and Fessenden for perfect 2020-2021 audits. It's the third year in a row for Ward Highlands and Spar. So kudos to those school secretaries and the principals on a job well done. Thank you for being good fiscal agents for your schools, because that means we have good fiscal agents all throughout the district. I know it also took some time to get to this point, but I noted when we talked about this previously that I was one who paid with a check to avoid credit card and online processing fees when I was paying my Marion after-school program fees. So I'm grateful that tonight we approved for the district to be making those processing fees, paying that. So we're not going to have that responsibility on families any longer. Now that we've gone to strictly online payments for Marion after-school programs, it certainly is a benefit for those families to not have to pay those processing fees. Also, I want to say a special thank you again. Though we've done this previously, I want to say a special thank you again to Mr. Ed Hall for his donation of world maps to all of our secondary language arts classrooms. I believe those world maps have been distributed to schools and to secondary language arts teachers. I want to personally say that I encourage everyone to use those maps, encouraging teachers to use them to enhance student learning. We know how impactful it is to understand geography, as we all were taught. It's not something that's a part of standards any longer, so it's not something students have. But it is imperative for students to have that context and understanding where places are when they're reading about them and learning about them in school. So want to encourage our educators to use those to further enhance education. So, uh, want to encourage our educators to use those to further enhance education. We also received email communication a few weeks ago from a student family, specifically asking about COVID restrictions for students. And I wanted to express, um, that I did check around with multiple school districts as well as the Florida depart- as well as our local, uh, Department of Health. Uh, we are currently abiding by the COVID restrictions for students despite any questions that parents may have. We are still following the Florida Department of Health's recommendations and other districts are as well. So, I just wanted to express that. I know that was a question that came forth to us, a parent asking for us to discuss it. So, wanted to make publicly aware that our restrictions that we have on students currently is still the standard according to the Flor- Florida Department of Health as well as all the other school districts that I talk to are following those same standards. I also wanted to, um, mention a few weeks ago that a parent came and spoke specifically to us about heavy backpacks. And I didn't know if we had any follow-up on that, but I personally would like to see if there was any follow-up potentially in a work session or something that we might be able to receive about a resolution or some suggestions on what we might be able to do, uh, because our students are carrying around a heavy load, literally and figuratively. So, I'm hopeful that we might be able to come up with additional suggestions on how we might be able to remedy that specifically for our secondary students, because they are changing classes and carrying all that with them. And finally, I did take a couple of moments while we were, uh, looking at other items and reviewed a couple of other school board minutes. I didn't have time to do extensive research, but I did find that Pasco County, as well as Collier County, do include their board member comments in their minutes following their meetings. So, I have typed up my comments and I will be sending them to Mar- Ms. Martinez Lopez immediately following this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And thank you to all of our board members for the comments that you've given, um, to all of our staff tonight, for everything that you guys have done in making sure that we had a smooth meeting and for staying here such to this hour. I promise you, it won't be long with my comments. Um, I do want to say congratulations to our East Marion family. I know Ms. King had the cow, the fan, um, as they celebrated, I think, a hundred years. You can wave it. They celebrated a hundred years on last Friday. The celebration had to be rescheduled due to the hurricane and, um, wasn't able to make it out. But I heard that it was a wonderful celebration and, um, congratulations to them on that. Our referendum, it is, it is that time of the year. We're weeks away from November eighth and the referendum is on the ballot. Many of us have received our, our mail-in ballots. And, um, as I looked over the, the referendum and the language of the referendum, um, I, I just kind of narrowed it down to, uh, that it should be a yes vote. A, a yes vote for this referendum is a vote for students, which are our children, a vote for staff and a vote for safe schools. So, um, on November eighth, I'm, I'm asking that you would seriously consider this referendum and know that it is a vote for our students, staff and safe schools. Finally, um, we've had a lot of discussion about Stanton Weersdale. A lot of, uh, things that have been said about this, this area, the school being, uh, coming out of segregation and just a lot of, lot of things that we've addressed about the road or the roads in the neighborhood. And it's, I find it interesting that we would put more emphasis on the road, but we have yet to discuss or have yet to hear, um, a comment about the number of minority staff that work at that school. When it's five or six, uh, as of yesterday, today it may be four or five. I've yet to hear that discussion come from a person that keeps bringing up the roads. And if we're going to talk about Stanton Weersdale and improving Stanton Weersdale, I'm more concerned about the, uh, the curriculum. I'm more concerned about, um, the demographics of the school and what it looks like and so that we don't go backwards and look like it looked in segregated days. So, it amazes me that we can continue to have a conversation about the road, but we haven't gotten yet to have a conversation or be brought to the table, um, about the demographics. There's a concern, there, there are some, some concerns at Stanton Weersdale. My concern is why is it there's only four or five African-American teachers, minority teachers? That's the concern for me. Why is it doesn't the, the, the staff look like the demographics of that school? Why don't those kids have people in the schools that look like them? When I say staff, I'm talking about from custodian to the highest ranking official that works there as a minority. So, uh, we have some issues to discuss about Stanton Weersdale, but roads ain't the top priority. So, if we want to talk about changing, making change, let's talk about that. So, that concludes my comments on that issue, because, um, I think sometimes we take all these detours and going down all these rabbit holes. And, and I would just suggest that, um, the person that keeps bringing these comments about the roads has stated many times that they have connections to Tallahassee. They have connections to certain, um, political figures. I, I would suggest that they reach out to those political figures and have those political figures to move on the requests of those roads, because obviously this board does not have the authority nor the power to do anything about it. Because if it had, we would have already done it. So, that concludes my comments. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received alternative placement lists for students through September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a time to request to speak on their child's disciplinary matters? May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students J.D. twenty-three zero zero two E, J.D. twenty-three zero zero four, J.D. twenty-two zero zero E and J.D. twenty-two zero one zero with educational services through the remainder of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by, uh, Board Member King. Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. In discussion, all in favor signify by aye. Aye, passing unanimously, passing unanimously. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at eight oh six P.M.
Board Chair, I have some items for signature when you're.
Yes, sir.
With the other business.
Thank you, everybody, for staying. Be safe.
Y'all have a good night. Y'all come back now, you hear?
And you're a real Beverly Hills.
Oh, lordy.